All right, welcome everyone. I call the July 7th, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. The main purpose of tonight's meeting is to conduct a study session on the growth targets and countywide planning policies. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. As with our previous meetings, the commissioners and staff will be participating by Zoom. During this Zoom meeting, the chat and question functions will not be available for use to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. We have a public comment agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. This time is for comments on issues not on tonight's agenda. We will also, oh, didn't update my notes there. Please use the raise hand function if you'd like to make a comment. And Senior Planner Lamb will bring you into the meeting and invite you to unmute. Please limit these comments to three minutes. Under Governor Inslee's Proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings, this meeting will be held remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing and orally. The Imagine Bothell Notice, City Website, and Tonight's Agenda all provided information to the public for providing comments. People wishing to comment were instructed to notify staff or provide written comments by 3:00 PM today. A video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone. Listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so everyone can follow along. Those who provided advance notice will be able to make comments under the audience comment portion of the meeting. An email was encouraged as well as acknowledged. At this point, we will take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of commissioners. And from our screen here, we have Commissioner Dodd.
Present.
Commissioner Westerbeck.
Here.
Commissioner Kurd.
Here.
Commissioner Robson.
Here.
Commissioner Alderks.
Here.
And Commissioner Augustin. In addition, Senior Planner Nathan Lamb is in attendance. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines for all meeting attendees. Please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Unmute, mute your microphone when not speaking and unmute when you want to speak. If you're also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For commissioners, at specific breaks during the presentation, I'll be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate this by holding up your speaker card or otherwise trying to get my attention and I will scan across the ribbon to try and see you. This will help us avoid having two people speak at once and Nathan will commit, Senior Planner Lamb will unmute you. Please mute your microphone when not speaking. So the first item on the agenda is public comment. In keeping with Governor Jay Inslee's Emergency Proclamation 20-28 regarding public gatherings and open public meetings, the city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to staff no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to commissioners and we have not received any, so I'm assuming none were submitted. This time is for items not on the agenda. Senior Planner Lamb, please let us know if there were any comments received.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there were no comments received, but there is one attendee, Mr. Rob Austin, in the attendees room and he has his hand up, so.
All right, please bring Mr. Austin into the meeting.
Okay. He should be popping up any second now. Okay.
Mr. Austin, you can turn on your video and unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. I'm on my phone, so I'll go ahead and keep the video off, but I'll thank you.
Okay, so three minutes.
Starting now, okay. So I did email David Boyd, so that may be at the next meeting then. So anyways, hello and thank you for the opportunity to speak one more time. This is a follow-up comment now that the proposed rezone areas discussed in the previous meetings in April through June have been approved and forwarded to City Council. I just think speaking now is still applicable since you may be making similar land use choices at almost every meeting here, of course. And then areas D and E may return to the table for further review in the not-so-distant future. Members of the commission have discussed the importance of envisioning the next 100 years. And I just wanted to add that I think it's very unlikely that in 100 years, our children's children will wonder why there aren't more condos in the neighborhood. And in fact, studies indicate that they will wonder why the Planning Commission did not preserve much more green space. Our loss of green space was never addressed by the council members despite an approaching heat wave. And many studies that show how vital nature is to a community. Homeowners and condo owners who live in tree canopy areas are actually building wealth and the property can be resold for more money in the same home with less trees and green space around it. Natural green space can lower temperatures up to 20 degrees in neighborhoods. More deaths occur from heat waves than any other natural disaster, and this is going to increase over the next 50 years in America. And it isn't just trees that are critical, so it's important to have less concrete surfaces such as concrete sidewalks, roads, and less asphalt. Rezoning existing green space and thereby making it more attractive for development does come at a price. And in fact, in a recent example, if the La Rev community in E were to focus on improving their current building even under current zoning requirements while maintaining the existing green space, then this has at least the same potential to increase their value of their homes, especially as we look down the road five to 10 years. The author Heather McGee in her book, The Some of Us, were cited at a recent commission meeting. One of my takeaways from her work, as it might pertain here, is to be aware or beware of reducing the value of a community in order to make it more accessible for everyone. And what I mean by that is that McGee seems to talk a lot about self-destruction. We don't need to reduce the green space such as D and E to make Bothell more portable and more accessible for all. McGee said in a recent interview that we all live under the same sky and we're all going to be vulnerable to climate change. Preserving green space and reducing the heat zones is not trivial. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. And I would point out to you, the commission's recommendations are forwarded to the council and the council will take action at a subsequent meeting. Senior Planner Lamb, which meeting is that? Oops, you're muted.
Sorry, that's the 20th of this month.
Okay, thank you very much. I wanted to get my.
July 20th.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to get my statement on the record. And then also I did send an email to David Boyd, and so that has references that will be there maybe for next meeting. All right, so thank you so much. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, are there any other individuals out there wishing to make comments?
No, Mr. Chairman, that was it.
All right, so then we will move on. Our next agenda item is approval of the minutes. We have before us the minutes of the June 16th meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Commissioner Dodd.
I move to approve the minutes of the June 16th meeting.
All right, is there a second? Commissioner Kurd.
I second the motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the June 16th meetings. Are there any discussion around those minutes? Scanning commissioners, seeing none. We will move on then. The mission, the motion to approve the minutes of the June 16th meeting is before us, so that's all in favor of approving those minutes. I see all of the commissioners raising their hand indicating approval of the minutes. So with that, the June 16th minutes are approved. Moving to our next agenda item, new business. Senior Planner Lamb, any new business before us?
Just the item on the agenda this evening.
Okay, so there being no new business, we would move on to the study session and Senior Planner Lamb will lead us through this.
Okay. Let me go ahead and share my screen. Okay, so you should all be able to hear me and see this?
Yes, looks good.
Okay. All right, so I will get us started. We're going to be talking about the 2021 Countywide Planning Policies update as well as the 2019 to 2044 growth targets that are currently being established by both King and Snohomish Counties. This update replaces the 2012 CPPs, so it's been quite a while. And the 2019 to 2044 growth targets are going to replace our older 2006 to 2035 growth targets, which we're going to talk about how that happens in a few slides here. So just starting off, grounding ourselves in how this all fits in with the Washington State Planning Framework. You guys have seen this diagram before, but for our, for some context for our, for any attendees and people watching online, the CPPs need to reflect state, regional, and local priorities based on the Growth Management Act Multi-County Planning Policies, excuse me, and the Regional Growth Strategy established by the Puget Sound Regional Council. As you could guess, the CPPs would address issues of mutual concern between the cities and towns in the county. And the CPPs provide a framework for our local comprehensive plan updates in 2024. And then we're going to spend quite a bit of time talking about how the CPPs establish growth targets. So they are part of the CPPs, they're not separate. And those will be adopted when the rest of the CPPs are adopted later this year, which we're going to talk about in a few slides. So again, with just some more review and context, this map you've seen quite a bit now too. But just to remember that we are a core city, that's our Regional Growth Strategy geographic designation, if you will. And there's 16 core cities in total in the four counties. And we are expected to accommodate 28% of the region's population growth and 35% of the employment growth by the year 2050. And you'll recall from your packets, there's a couple bar charts that show sort of how those numbers are broken down by the various counties and core cities and high-capacity transit communities and the other geographies that fit within to the Regional Growth Strategy Framework. One thing to keep in the back of your mind is that King County's core cities are expected to accommodate a much larger share of King County's growth than core cities in Kitsap, Pierce, and Snohomish Counties. And so the reason why we're going to be talking about both King and Snohomish Counties because we straddle both of those counties and we're identified as a core city in both of those counties. Okay, this should be review for some of you as well. Earlier this year, we had some of our current planning staff come to you guys and give you a rundown of where we are in achieving our previous 2006 to 2035 targets progress from the Urban Growth Capacity Report results, which are in the, should be being adopted as we speak. I believe June is what both counties aim for. And I haven't seen the minutes from either county's councils to know whether they've officially been adopted or not. But this was the result that gives us sort of a framework to work with for establishing new growth targets to 2024. So what you see here is for King County, you've got housing units and jobs. You've got our 2035 target. You can see that 41% of the time of the range of years has passed by or elapsed and we've achieved about 50% of our housing unit target and then we've achieved about 87% of our jobs target. And so again, these are going to be replaced by the 2044 growth targets. Okay, so now going to Snohomish County, we have the same table but different numbers. Our target for Snohomish County was about 3,000 housing units and about almost 5,000 jobs. Again, 41% of the time has elapsed and we have achieved Snohomish County just over a third of what our target is and about half of what our jobs target was. And again, these will be replaced by the 2044 targets. Okay, so how does this, how do the counties, what's their procedural process like for establishing new CPPs? We'll start with King County, which the effort is mostly led by the Growth Management Planning Council, which has a sort of subcommittee called the Interjurisdictional Staff Team, which is made up of staff from all of the jurisdictions within King County. And they started, I want to say just over a year ago, but it could have been longer than that, revising and working collaboratively to establish new policies and delete old language and just update the CPPs for 2021, which brings us to where we're at now in these last, in the last couple quarters of getting the CPPs across the finish line. So in, once their draft was established, they released it for public comment. And I think that was a couple months that there was a public comment period and that brought us up to the end of May, which they reviewed all the comments, proposed amendments, they sort of massaged in the the comments that they got back and proposed amendments were collaboratively to negotiate some of the things that they heard from the community and updated their draft accordingly. And so about mid-June, they proposed their official CPPs to the Growth Management Planning Council and made, should have made their official recommendation June 23rd to King County Council. Again, I haven't seen minutes put out yet, so I'm not sure that they made that official recommendation, but they should be on track. So if that happened, bringing us down to the bottom of the flowchart here, they should be on target for King County to start reviewing the draft CPPs, at which they'll have a 90-day ratification process. I believe it was 30% of the jurisdictions need to agree to approve the draft CPPs and at which point they have until the end of the year to approve those. And basically what that does is sets up the county as well as the jurisdictions like Bothell within the county to start scoping for a comprehensive update in 2024. Okay, so there's a lot of text on this slide, so I'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. This is just an overview of how the, each chapter of the CPPs was modified since 2020. If you go onto both counties' websites and you look at the draft CPPs, you'll notice that both documents are, while the chapters may be organized and ordered a bit differently or maybe named differently, they sort of revolve around a set of guiding and central principles that make up the framework for the approach to the rest of the policies and the rest of the chapters. And so we're just going to take a quick look at how each chapter was updated. So King County has a new framework chapter in which they included a land acknowledgement statement for the Coast Salish Indigenous People in this region and a new subsection on social equity. In the Environment Chapter, there are minor changes related to environmentally sensitive development practices, referencing integrated pest management, listing noises of pollutant that has a racially disparate impact on communities. In the Development Patterns Chapter, they encourage infill, have added urban design examples, and are supporting collaboration in land conservation and habitat protection planning. The Economy Chapter, there are various minor changes to discussion of sectors refining focus on social equity and changes for consistency with other chapters. In the Housing Chapter, there's changes to reflect recently adopted state legislation related to housing equity and displacement topics and new substantive guidance in the Housing Technical Appendix. So this technical appendix was something that caught our eye. I know that the Planning Commission has, you know, made affordable housing sort of a priority as well as City Council. And this technical appendix that they added is very informative. I would encourage you all to take a look at it. Basically, it uses, it starts with the most up-to-date data from HUD as part of their, I hope I don't butcher this acronym, I think it's the Comprehensive Housing Affordability Strategy, and sort of gives some good direction to jurisdictions for how to approach their housing needs assessment as part of their housing element update in their comprehensive plans. And it gives a really informative table that breaks out by range of affordability, the number of units in Bothell and surrounding jurisdictions from low income to moderate income and extremely low income, 0 to 35, 0 to 30, I believe was the range that they established was, we had the most need in our region for. So I'd just say, take a look at that appendix. It is very helpful to understand a snapshot of what Bothell looks like in terms of what we're providing for affordable housing to date. Moving on, the Transportation Chapter, there were some refinements to the bike pet and active transportation goals. New policies supporting the region's process to develop an aviation facility. In the Public Facilities Chapter, there were changes addressing social equity where major capital facilities are cited and planning for natural hazards. And then there were some updates to the appendices as well, including the King County Centers designation framework, which we're all experts on after our last meeting. And then the creation of a new historical framework appendix, which is the one that I'm least familiar with. I think it talks about the process of scoping from 2012 and the last update to now. Okay, so we're going to switch gears and start talking about the growth targets now. So if you'll recall from one of the previous slides with the flowchart that showed the process of procedurally how the CPPs are updated, when King County released their report for public comment, the majority of their public feedback was related to growth targets, the initial growth targets that were released in the CPPs. Specifically regarding achieving a jobs-to-housing balance, which is something that PSRC's Vision 2050 spends a lot of time discussing as a priority for the region and adjustments to those initial targets that they saw for jurisdictions in the draft CPPs. Okay, so one of the letters that the King County Interjurisdictional Staff Team received was from PSRC, which encouraged them to implement, to further implement Vision 2050 by distributing leftover unallocated employment growth. Okay, so taking a step back and going, looking at our urban growth capacity numbers. Okay, those are what we use to inform us for what's a reasonable target to take on because you obviously, you don't want to take on such a high number in your target for population growth and job growth if you don't have the capacity to accommodate that growth. And so what ended up happening was when the jurisdictions worked together and established their initial targets, there were 28,000 jobs left over that we, that core cities needed to distribute proportionally among themselves to accommodate that growth that is in Vision 20 from this bar chart that you see and that was in your reports. Okay, so after a couple months that that happened, there was some negotiation between the county and the core cities working together to make sure we implemented the regional growth strategy. I believe Bellevue took on the lion's share of that number because of trends that they've seen with growth in their own jurisdiction. They believed that they could accommodate more growth than they initially thought they could. And the rest was distributed proportionately to the rest of the core cities like Bothell. I think we ended up taking on an additional maybe 500 jobs. Okay, so where does that bring us to today? Here are the draft growth target numbers. And this is what, just to ground ourselves again for what growth targets even are. There are policy statements about the amount of housing and employment growth each jurisdiction is planning to accommodate within its comprehensive plan. So if you go look at our comp plan, you'll see the previous 2035 targets that we talked about earlier. And that sort of sets the stage for our land use policy, our land use element. And I'm guessing it'll be the same for our 2024 update. So here was the capacity numbers that came out of the Urban Growth Capacity Report. We found that in the King County portion of Bothell, we have room for an additional 6,300 housing units and redevelopment or development capacity for about 95, well, 9,572 jobs. The growth targets that we've agreed to take on so far is 5,800 housing units, so just slightly below what our capacity is. And then 9,500 jobs, which is almost equal to what our capacity is. So if there is a significant gap, like I alluded to earlier, between capacity and target, then a jurisdiction has to demonstrate through reasonable measures in their comprehensive plan how they're going to accommodate the growth with their land use policy and within zones. But we are not going to have to do that because we're not over what our capacity is. Okay, so now we're going to, so that was the numbers for King County. And now we're going to go to the Snohomish County side because we, as we straddle both counties, we have the joy of balancing growth in both counties. So just like King County Growth Management Planning Council, the effort to update the CPPs is led by the Snohomish County Tomorrow Group. They have several subcommittees and the Planning Advisory Committee is the one that stewards the update. They eventually make a recommendation to the Steering Committee, which actually should have happened in June, which the Steering Committee will then make an official recommendation to Snohomish County Council, who would adopt by the end of the year, just like King County. Now, I have not seen the minutes for their June, their last June meeting, so I'm not sure that that happened. But I believe they were on track to do so. Okay, so nearing the end here, we talked about King County's revisions and new policies. This is just an overview of, on the Snohomish County side. They've got this handy graphic that shows how the policy was sort of put together. Like I said, they all sort of revolve around these central principles and general frameworks. Each chapter does have its own overarching goal. So sometimes it can be easy to get lost in sort of the hierarchy of, you know, is a goal, does it take precedent over the framework policy? But this helps to visualize how that works in the CPPs. Thematically, this is sort of what they included in each of their chapters. I don't have as much of a comprehensive review as for King County. I don't have as much of a comprehensive review as for King County, but they thematically just massaged in equity and inclusion, climate change, transit supportive and oriented development, identifying risk and mitigating the effects of residential and business displacement, and countywide centers and reasonable measures. Okay, so Snohomish County is a little bit further behind than King County is with their growth targets. We do not have draft growth targets yet. We just have our urban growth capacity numbers. Here's the language that they use for growth targets in their CPPs. It says they emphasize growth in and near centers and high capacity transit, addresses jobs and housing balance, and manages and reduces the rate of rural growth over time and supports infill within the urban growth area. Okay, so again, Bothell is still categorized as a core city in, on the Snohomish side too, and which includes our Canyon Park RGC. And the urban growth capacity report told us that we have capacity to twenty thirty five to accommodate about ten thousand population units, which is later going to be translated into housing units like we saw for King County, and an additional sixty four hundred jobs. Okay, with the, with the growth targets yet to be determined. And so here we are at the end. So, so where does that fit in with the work that we all do? So once the CPPs are officially adopted at the end of the year and we begin scoping and thinking about what our twenty twenty four update is gonna be like. Our, our comprehensive plan is, is a beast and, you know, over five hundred pages. And, and we've got to think about how we are going to incorporate the, the policy changes that took place, are going to take place at the countywide level as well as the, the multi-county level through the policies established by PSRC. And so here's just three thematically. You, you could say that both, so, so Vision twenty, Vision twenty five, or excuse me, let me try to spit this out and articulate this. So Vision twenty fifty uses the following themes throughout their multi-county planning policies. And as such, the counties have followed suit because we are mandated to by the state. And the local jurisdictions have to do the same. And so we've got to think about how we get these topics into our comprehensive plan. Equity and social justice, I'm not sure. I think our comprehensive plan maybe mentions that like maybe once. And so we've, we'll have quite a bit of work to do on that front. Public health is addressed a number of times in terms of physical and mental health in a number of our elements. But maybe we can think about another way to sort of repackage those and, and update them accordingly for twenty twenty four. And then obviously, climate change. Climate change is mentioned quite a bit in our natural environment element. But it is, I would, I'd say it's not, it's not thematic throughout our, our entire comprehensive plan. And so this is, this is just, hopefully gets us thinking about how we're gonna tackle this. And, you know, I think as staff, we would ask that, you know, as, when we start to work together in the future on this, that we all sort of keep an eye out for maybe what other jurisdictions are doing or, or best practices on, on how we can go about this. And we have not begun scoping yet. But like I said, right after the CPPs are adopted, I believe is when we would start. So with that, I'll try to field any questions. And I can go back to any slides that we need to just let know. Can't figure out how to stop.
A minute to unmute there. Commissioner Gustafson first, and then Commissioner Kerd.
Thank you Chair Kiernan, and thank you Senior Planner Lamb for leading us through and making this more comprehensible. And my question is, first of all, are we as a planning commission taking action on the growth targets? What is our role here? Do we suggest or ratify the growth targets?
Yeah, sorry, I should have mentioned that. Where the, the, the commission is not taking action, this has just been a study session. I think probably our chance to make comments would have been during the public period a few months ago. But as, as of right now, I believe the official recommendations have been made to the county councils and they'll move forward from there, so.
This will pretty much inform our comprehensive plan, so it's good to know now. Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Commissioner Kerd.
Thanks Chair, this is Karsten. Thanks for the presentation. I have two brief points or questions. One is procedural. You mentioned that Snohomish County was utilizing a urban capacity analysis. And I'm wondering if that's the same thing as the buildable lands analysis that we've been, or the planning department has been working on for so long? Or is that a different thing?
No, that's a, that's a good catch. They are synonymous. So the buildable lands report is the urban growth capacity report. And essentially, that just gives us a snapshot of the capacity that we have to accommodate tho, those targets to twenty forty four.
So has that been completed for the entire city of Bothell?
It has, and that, so June was the cutoff date for counties to submit those to their councils to be formally adopted. So those capacity numbers that we looked at should be our official capacity numbers moving forward. I, I don't foresee them changing at all at this point.
Okay, and then my second point, what, oh.
No, no.
Go ahead. Okay, my second point is really technical, so I don't expect an answer. But I know that in King County, the city of Bothell hasn't actually annexed all of our areas. There's basically some right of way underneath four oh five on Woodinville Drive or, yeah, old railroad right of way that is still part of unincorporated King County. Now, it doesn't really add any jobs or population. But I'm wondering if, because my cursory review of King County's CPP didn't include the city of Bothell as any potential annexation areas, I'm wondering if we can still kind of push that through so that we can finally have a, no more annexation areas in King County? Or is that a separate thing entirely that is just a scrivener's error that can be corrected easily?
Well, I, I don't really have a, a good answer for you. My understanding was that all of the unincorporated King County, that there, that there wasn't an opportunity for Bothell to incorporate any more unincorporated urban growth area. And so I'd have to check in on that. But I think, like you alluded to, at this point, it's probably a little bit late in the process to do so. Although I'm not sure at which point, I'm, I'm not sure procedurally what the threshold is. For once, an official recommendation has been made to the councils for those reports. What, what is a, what is a significant change that, that could be made? Or which, or what can't be made? So I'd, I'd have to look into that and get back to you, so.
It's likely very insignificant.
Better answer for you.
No worries, thank you.
No, but you, you, you raise a good point. If it could increase capacity, then, then I think that's where, yeah, we'd, we'd be going with it. So I'll get back to you.
Commissioner Westerbeck.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to try and jump in on Karsten there. This is related to Karsten's question. It's probably related to buildable lands. I have delved into how that's done, though I'm very curious about it. I need to look at it. I'm curious, when they do the, the capacity studies in the buildable lands, that's gotta be based on our current land use, which is somewhat low capacity. So do they take into account, or do we take into account, I guess we probably, probably don't, possible land use change, zoning changes, upzones that could be occurring? Because it seems like we could do, build a lot more than, than these, these targets if we densified like other cities, especially in our core areas. So, because it seems like it's based on really low, low density building patterns, kind of sprawly building patterns. Do, do you know it's based on, I mean, it must be based on current land use?
Yeah, no, you're right. It's, it's, I believe twenty nineteen was the cutoff date for policy and, and what's allowed in zones. I came in late in the game, so.
Sure.
I have a rudimentary understanding of, especially on the technical side of, of how everything was calculated. But from what I understand, they took a snapshot in twenty nineteen for what was developed and what, what could be redeveloped and any vacant parcels and room for new development based on what's allowed in the zoning provisions.
Right, what's currently allowed, yeah.
Yep.
Potentially that, depending on work of planning commissions and city councils, that could really change a lot, it sounds like. And like my next questions are kind of related to that. You know, they've got the, the targets. Are we allowed? It seems like we'd be allowed to exceed population, jobs, homes if we chose to. I mean, they, they don't put a governor on us per se if we decide that we're gonna densify. And it's good for builders.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, and, and, no, you're, you're, you raise a good point. So like with the GDC amendment, so anytime, you know, a commission, a city council recommends or make an amendment to allow for greater densities or more units or like we're gonna be working on missing middle housing is.
Right.
A priority. And so the, the thing about the urban growth capacity report is you've got to have a cutoff date. And, you know, anything that made it into the report was what was adopted currently at the time.
A sort of a, a snapshot of time or a, as is kind of, okay, I see.
Yep, and then, and then, you know, as we move forward for thinking about our growth targets, you know, we can say, well, you know, we've established, you know, getting some amendments to our code for missing middle housing, which is gonna significantly, we think, increase our capacity. And so maybe we can take on a greater, a higher target for housing units.
Right, kind of recalculates, okay.
Exactly, that's how we sort of negotiate.
Makes sense. I was curious about that. Thanks, Nathan.
Sure.
Commissioner Gustafson, and then Commissioner Aldrich.
And thank you. Commissioner Aldrich, would you like to go first since I already spoke on this?
Sure, thank you. And I apologize if there's background noise. Please let me know if it's, if it's difficult to hear me. So thank you very much for that presentation. And I'm not surprised to see that new, newest policies and their focus is gonna be equity, social justice, public health, and climate change. And my question is, what can we expect in those areas that will be coming to us to consider? And how much support and guidance are local, or are the core cities like Bothell going to be receiving? And can you kind of explain what that process might look like?
Yeah, that is a really good question. I would have to look into, is there gonna be any guidance coming from PSRC for how, how to approach those topics? That is good research for, for us to do, especially for getting out in front of that when we begin scoping. And then, you know, we've been, we've, we've got a diversity, equity, and inclusion director now. And I believe we, and committee, and I believe we spoke about that at our last meeting. But, you know, hopefully on that front, we can start to think about how we're going to incorporate that topic into our comp plan. And I'm, I'm forgetting the, the very first part of your question, so let me know if I didn't answer that fully.
Um, I think so. It's just, I guess the first part of the question is, how do we, like, what, how do we expect to implement those? And I, I do think you've answered that. So I guess my follow-up question to you would be, would there be opportunities for our DEI consultant to, to present to planning commission on these topics?
I don't see why not. That's a really good idea. I can make a note of that and circle back around with Director Cotterman and Dave and see how we, how we could package something to, to bring it to the commission. But yeah, that's, that's definitely a good idea. So, thank you.
Okay, other commissioner questions or comments? Commissioner Gustafson.
Thank you Chair, and this is piggybacking on Commissioner Westerbeck's question. I noticed that we are pushing ourselves to the limit of the current capacity on job growth, but not so much on housing growth. Senior Planner Lamb, in your professional opinion, does that seem lopsided? Or do we already have enough housing already added so that there won't be an imbalance? That's a pretty high level question.
Yeah, that, that's a good question too. You're, you're raising a concern that if we, if you'll remember that slide about the public feedback that King County got is that the initial targets did seem lopsided. And as a, you know, as a priority from Vision twenty fifty and PSRC to achieve a, a housing and jobs balance, I, I would think we would try to achieve that as best we can. The best I can do is follow up with my department and talk about, hey, do, you know, do we think we can take on more? I do recall a conversation we had with council when our director was updating council about where we were in the CPP's update process. And I do remember them saying that, you know, we're being fairly aggressive about pursuing policy that does increase capacity, especially for affordable housing. And so, you know, not necessarily run wild with that, with that housing unit growth target, but that maybe we could be liberal. And so, yeah, I'll, I'll have to follow up to get a, to get a better answer for you, but that's a good point.
Thank you.
All right, other commissioner comments or questions regarding the growth targets and planning policies? Seeing none, thank you Senior Planner Lamb for presenting this information to us. I think it provided us some good background information as we move forward on other issues that will be coming before us in the future. So we appreciate your time on this and look forward to hearing more. So thank you.
Thanks.
With that, next agenda item is unfinished business. Senior Planner Lamb, any unfinished business for us?
I don't have any updates, no.
No, okay. About reports from staff, same answer?
Same answer, and I, and I'm still working on getting the commission answers from our last meeting. So hopefully I'll be able to follow up with you sooner than later.
All right, thank you. I will look forward to that. Next item is reports from members. Any of the members want to update the rest of the commission on anything, any reports for us? Commissioner Kerd.
Hey, I have an update. So on July first, water districts throughout the state of Washington had to release water quality indices. And I took a look at the city of Bothell's. There are several water providers in the city, including Alderwood Water and North Shore Utility District, and also the city of Bothell. And if you have a chance to read through the report, it's on the city's website. But things are still looking really good in terms of water quality. And that has implications on growth and growth targets too. Because environmentally, environmental justice depends on everybody having equitable access to clean and healthy water. And it's something that our city is doing really well with, so I wanted to point that out, thanks.
Thank you Commissioner Kerd. Other commissioners, reports, comments for the group? Commissioner Gustafson.
Hi, Commissioner Gustafson here. I did want to make sure that we addressed the comment or questions from Mr. Austin. I don't know if he's still on the line. And I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I don't know if his comments on green space might have already been addressed. But he was very concerned about the loss of green space in blocks D and E. I want to respect that and ask, have we actually measured or done an analysis of the green space that would be potentially lost in the areas due to the proposed zoning changes? Has that been addressed specifically on the green space issue yet?
I don't know that that's been specifically addressed, but it is funny that this comes up now because we've started to have some very preliminary conversations with our Public Works Department about how we can work together on the 2024 update to address urban heat island effect through mapping and working together and also retention of green space. There was a tree retention report that Bothell has on, that, we have one on file. I can't recall which year it's from, but I have seen it since I started. I'm not familiar with it, but I know that we have one. And I would have to see how that lines up, like with our buildable lands report. But we've started discussing those topics that Mr. Austin brought up. So, you know, that is getting to Commissioner Aldrichs. One of her questions is that is something that we can think about how to package and bring to the commission. Now, city council has urged staff to start working on tree retention, an updated tree retention, green space report. And so, yeah, I'll have to talk with my department about how to best go about that. But we are having those conversations if it's any consolation to the commission and Mr. Austin. So I'll make a note of that too, thanks.
So my recollection is specific to block E, that given the setbacks, residential setbacks in particular, really the only portion of that block which was impacted by the action is the current parking lot to the La Rev condominium. So it's already cleared. There, we did talk early in the process about some of the slopes, which are the major part of the green space, and they weren't impacted by that. So I think that the actual impact on the ground from those actions to green space is relatively small. The other thing I think people need to keep in mind, one of the purposes of the Growth Management Act is to concentrate growth into urban areas. So that does mean that some lands which are currently green within urban areas will be developed. But the purpose of that is to preserve the greenlands outside the growth boundary. So that's one of the fundamental principles in this state's growth planning. So with that little statement, any other reports from members? Seeing none, then is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, sorry to come back in here. So I was a bit hasty there for the staff reports part. I do have some information I think would be helpful. So, so you guys have seen the agenda for our next meeting, which is the TDR in Canyon Park. That'll be the only item for that day. I did discuss with Director Cotterman, seeing what the commission thinks about potentially canceling the meeting on the first meeting in September, which is the first because it's right before the holiday. We know a lot of folks go on vacation and are out of town. So I don't know that we need to do that now, but just something to be aware of. And for the second meeting in September, we are working on lining up a bike plan and comprehensive plan amendment. So our Public Works Department has been putting together with a consultant a very comprehensive bike plan. And they are aiming for doing all of their public outreach within the next month, I guess, now. And are hoping to come before you, September 15th. So that's sort of what's in the pipeline. And I think you all were copied on a email about reentry planning and that in September, we're sort of going to take the steps to start meeting in person, at least as staff and the commission, and then offer an option for citizens to join via Zoom. So just a couple of things to be aware about. That's it for my staff report.
Thank you. So I suggest commissioners think about the first meeting in September and then perhaps send out an email poll in August. I know we've done that before, checking whether people are available, whether we'd have a quorum, and whether there are agenda items to fill up. We don't need to meet just because there's space on the calendar for a meeting. So yeah, do let us know and everyone keep that in mind. So with that, any other reports? All right, seeing none, then is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn the planning commission meeting.
All right, Commissioner Westerbeck moves to adjourn. I see Commissioner Dodd.
Seconded.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor? So we adjourn the July 7th meeting of the planning commission, 6:58. A quick and informative meeting, thank you Senior Planner Lamb. And commissioners, look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks. Have a good night all.
Thank you Senior Planner Lamb, appreciate it.
You're welcome, good night everyone, see you in a couple of weeks.